Twenty twenty five. The elected body present, council member Christine Hall, council member Alan Sells, council member David Johnson, council member Sarah Beeson, council member G. Lee Hills, council member William Morthland. I'm Randy Knighton, the chief administrative officer, along with chief legal counsel David Davidson and deputy city clerk and assistant to the council, Michelle Miller. Purpose of committee meetings are for city departments to convey information to the mayor and city council and discuss initiatives listed on the published agendas and provide updates of vital information essential for the operation of city government. The committee consists of the council and mayor, as well as the city administrator who serves as chair of committee meetings, and this is a public meeting, not a public hearing. Therefore, while we certainly welcome members of the public and the viewing audience, we do not normally take questions or comments during these meetings, they are taken, second, fourth Monday of each month at city council meetings, as well as the fifth Monday in open forum. We do always encourage residents to reach out to our city staff for any questions you may have regarding city operations, and we also encourage you to take a look at Roswell365.com for a calendar of events, as well as our web service portal to report any issues of concern. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the committee meeting minutes for July 29th, 2025. We'll entertain a motion, a motion by council member Hills, second by council member Beeson. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All right, that passes unanimously, thank you very much. On our regular agenda, item number two as listed, consideration of the final plat for Little Lakes Estates, 20252121, presented by Angela Rambo. Do I see Angela? Do I see the community development department? All right, all right. All right, I'll tell you what with, all right. With what we'll do with the committee's consent, we'll move to item number three. Item number three, consideration for the approval and budget authorization from mayor and council to apply for the Georgia Council for the Arts Facilities Grant. That will be presented by Stephen Malone, director of Recreation Parks Historic and Cultural Affairs.
Good evening. This opportunity is a grant that's being hosted to the Georgia Council for the Arts. We are proposing that this grant, which is a one-to-one match, go towards the Roswell Cultural Arts Center. We currently have 96 dimmers located within that cultural arts center that are beginning to fail and become inoperable. They are the original dimmer switches that came with the center when it was developed, and unfortunately, we've run into some challenges when it comes to repairing and replacing the current dimmers, and the company that used to service and manufacture the product is no longer in business, and therefore, we're running into some challenges even just with keeping it ongoing and operable. So we're proposing an $80,000 project. It would be a one-to-one match, that'd be $40,000 from the Georgia Council for the Arts Grant, with a $40,000 matching from the city's grant contingency fund. This is a grant that we have had success in receiving approval from at least in the last two out of three years. This was the same grant opportunity in which we were able to escalate our AV and lighting kind of retrofit at the cultural arts center, and we were able to take it from a three-year phased approach to a two-year implementation because of this specific grant that we were awarded, I think in 2022 and 2024. So we're going to go after it again. We hope that the success that we've had in the past is actually going to help us as we move forward with this grant request. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, for illustrative purposes, we'll slide through, no pun intended, slide through the slide deck.
So again, this is all the details that we just went over. This gives you a little bit of the description. This is all the information within the grant itself. Here's the financial commitment that we discussed, $80,000 project, $40,000 for the grant, $40,000 for the match out of the grant contingency fund. Here's just a visual, just to show you, right now, the dimmers and the panel in which it's situated in sits in a very kind of one of our outbuildings, which has poorly maintained as far as like the airflow and that, so we're trying to move it inside, which will be helpful in sustaining it long term, just to give you a little bit of a visual.
All right, thank you, Mr. Malone. We have any questions or comments from the council committee? All right, seeing none, we'll entertain a motion. Motion by council member Hills, second by council member Beeson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All right, thank you. We'll move back to item number two. Chief legal counsel David Davidson will present the item. Consideration of the final plat for Little Lake Estates. He said he wanted to present it.
No, I said I would.
I know. Consideration of the final plat for Little Lake Estates, 20252121, presented by our chief legal counsel, Mr. David Davidson. You should have an illustration in your packet with the details of the proposal.
Yes, this is a final plat, which means the construction of the roads and the infrastructure for which the city will be responsible for are included on the plat. The approvals from staff are included in your packet on pages, packet page 20 through There's some conditions in there that need, that will obviously have to be met, but with those conditions, we recommend approval. We can move it to council.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Any questions or comments from council? Yes, council member Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Knighton. My question is regarding the multi-use trail that's been installed in front of this property. Will that multi-use trail stay in place as we go through the Pine Grove Road corridor improvement project?
That's a good question. In other words, will it stay in place before or during the construction of the multi-use trail?
My question is, knowing that we had this project, the Pine Grove Road project, that typically a builder would put funds into the sidewalk fund, and in this case, they built a multi-use trail, and there's some topography things, and I just want to find out, would like to know if it's going to stay there or if it's going to have to be torn up.
Typically, it would be integrated into the larger project, but we'll make sure we have clarity prior to coming to council, but a very good point to be made, want to make sure that it incorporates the future prospects of the multi-use trail on Pine Grove.
Thank you.
And dedicated right away as well if needed. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Yes, council member Beeson.
This might be a question for if this comes to council. Is there any shared amenities throughout this property? Because I'm not seeing anything that an HOA would control, so will there be an HOA as part of this plat? Only it looks like there's lots.
Yes.
So there are nine lots, with lot nine being the common area. I don't think there's any amenities. It looks like that is going to be the, just as common area.
It's just, so we don't know if there's plans for that common area then at this time? Okay.
That's going to be the detention.
You said it's going to be detention. I'm really going to throw you into this because you just came in hot. Given that it's a eight-lot property, and there is the ninth area or the ninth parcel is going to be allocated towards green space, Mr. Davidson's guess was it's going to be allocated to detention. If that is the case, do they have an HOA that stipulates that that is shared amenity amongst all eight property owners for the maintenance of that property? I just want to make sure that's not falling back on the responsibility of the city to enforce or whoever the adjacent homeowners are.
I cannot answer that question right now.
That's fine, so it might be the question for the applicant whenever they come in, I guess for the final plat approval.
Mr. Knighton, may I be in on that?
Sure, yes, council member Hills.
Thank you, sir. I remember us talking about this early on when they came and presented, and they've talked about an HOA for that specifically.
Okay.
I think they started with 11 lots and couldn't make it work with what we're requiring out of it, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, and I believe they came back, there was a denial, and then a lot frontage reduction was rejected.
Correct.
So they came back with the eight.
But I'm relying on memory and not facts, so, but I remember an HOA being discussed because of that common area. But yes, if we could get some official ruling on that.
On that, we don't generally demand it or require it, but I can get clarification.
Yeah, I just say, speaking from experience with a Yeah, I just say, speaking from experience with a, living in an HOA, where HOAs don't necessarily want to take responsibility for shared spaces and wanting to put it instead on adjacent homeowners, or it falls to whoever's going to have the nuisance impact the most, making sure that it's the shared responsibility of the HOA to maintain that space, especially if it's a smaller homeowners association. And then making sure that if it is a detention area, that that's, it's allocated as such, or at least we know what the green space is for that area.
Yeah, it is underground detention, but what I'm hearing you say is you want to ensure that should the HOA not be present at a later time, you want to make sure that the homeowners are also included.
That they're evenly dividing the responsibility of the detention, because otherwise, if the detention fails or there's an HOA, like they lapse their bylaws and the HOA falls apart, whatever the reason is, I want to make sure that those eight homeowners are equally responsible for that shared detention as opposed to just falling on whoever the adjacent property owner is.
I will check that out.
Thank you. That's it on my end.
I am about ninety-five percent sure that we require them to have their, have it in their covenants, that they will maintain it.
Perfect, just making sure. And I say this as somebody who, my neighborhood predates city of Roswell involvement. We are good old grandfathered in from Fulton County, but yes, wanting to make sure that that is not the case moving forward, especially for these smaller neighborhoods where you're having a lot of cost incurred across just a few homeowners.
And I understand that you want us to go beyond the covenants and make sure that it's evenly divided, should the HOA not exist, or would that satisfy your?
I believe what Mr. Davidson is saying is that it should be satisfied within the city. Okay.
That is the normal course that we require.
Perfect, just making sure. Thank you, I'm good.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments regarding this item? None, all in favor? Motion, I'm sorry, motion, motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Hills. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. A relatively short meeting this evening. We hope everybody has a wonderful evening as well. And for those in the viewing audience, I would direct you to last night's council meeting as well as last, two weeks ago, last committee meeting, if you want to have a, an extensive presentation on the city's finances, financial position, and economic development plans as well. All right? With that, seeing no further business, we'll entertain a motion of adjournment. Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Beeson. Any further comments or questions? All in favor? Thank you, passes unanimously.